And my name, thank you. And my name is Mayor Beverly H. Burks and this meeting is officially called to order for the February twenty twenty-two Clarkston City Council Meeting. At this time, I will do roll call. Vice Mayor Yasu.
Present.
Councilwoman Carroll.
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Present.
Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
And Councilwoman Hood.
So she has not joined yet. We'll now proceed with item two, which is Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move on now to item three, which is the administrative business presentations. At this time, we need to have the approval of the minutes for the twelve-seven twenty-twenty-one City Council Meeting, the one-eleven twenty-twenty-two City Council Meeting, and the one-twenty-five twenty-twenty-two work session. And at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Out, um, I move to approve the minutes from December seventh, twenty-twenty-one, um, the City Council meeting on January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, uh, City Council meeting and January twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, work session.
Second.
I said.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we approve the, uh, City Council meeting for December seventh, twenty-twenty-one, for the January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two City Council meeting and the January twenty-fifth work session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Motion pass. So at this time, we'll go through our reports, starting with the Planning, Economic, and Development Report, followed by the City Manager Report. Ms. Cowie.
Thank you, Mayor Burks. Um, the City Department of Planning and Economic Development is working with the DeKalb County GIS Department to update our boundary and our annual boundary and, um, annexation survey. This gives us the opportunity to present to the census our updated status um, and have them update any, um, areas that we may have annexed as far as our mapping is concerned, but of course, that has been updated. So we want to make sure that, um, the census has our updated information. Um, certificate of occupancies have been issued for Building Two Hundred for the Peachtree Creek, um, Ponce apartment. They're moving along, um, graciously with getting that development, um, completed. Our affordable housing development, um, we are extremely excited about it. So we're glad that they're moving for, forward, um, with it. Um, and then after Planning and Economic Development Report, Madam Mayor, and I will go right into the City Manager's Report. Um, the roadwork for Roland Street, um, the one-way conversion, um, will start on February the fourteenth. That's the Roland Street between Norman Road and Market Street. It was originally scheduled to begin, um, February the seventh. That date has been updated, um, weather permitting, to February the fourteenth. Um, email notifications, along with physical copies of the notification, will be given to the, um, businesses and homeowners or renters that it does affect. Um, per our contract with Latem Home Sanitation, um, section three of their compensation, um, contract, the annual rate for residential curbside recycling was five dollars and twenty-five cents per residential unit. Um, as of March the first, twenty-twenty-two, that cost will increase to five dollars and fifty-seven cents. The contract that was previously, um, signed in twenty-twenty-one allows within our three years for cost of living increase or decrease, and that increase from five twenty-five to, um, five dollars and fifty-seven cents, um, per residential unit, um, will be adjusted and will start as of March. We will continue to pro- provide our residents, um, with excellent customer service. Our dedicated hours of operation are eight-thirty to five o'clock, Monday through Friday. Um, our hours of operation for in-person is pre-scheduled appointment on Tuesdays and Thursdays from ten to two P M. We will accommodate those who give us a call and we're excited to, um, help our customers and our business owners. And if you should have to call us, please email us to spree- pre-schedule an appointment at help@cityofclarkston.com or four-zero-four-two-nine-six-six-four-eight-nine. My extension is four-two-one if you directly want to contact the City Manager's Office. Mayor Burks.
Questions for Ms. Cowie on either report? Hearing none, thank you very much, and we'll proceed with our city attorney, Mr. Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I am pleased to report that DeKalb County officially acted to consent to the de-annexation that the council previously approved at the rear lot, uh, behind the affordable housing development that City Manager Cowie mentioned. And then, uh, today, the official paperwork was processed to apply to the city of Tucker to annex that, um, floodplain lot. And that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Quinn at this time?
Hearing none, we'll now move into council remarks and we'll start with Vice Mary Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I attended on January twenty-sixth, um, the DeKalb County, uh, State of District, uh, by DeKalb County Schools, uh, addressed by Superintendent. And on the twenty-seventh, I, uh, me and Councilmember Hopkins, we, uh, uh, inspected the house at Forty Oaks and, um, uh, we, uh, emailed our recommendations, um, in the meantime to add more tarping, um, on the kitchen side and also on the porch and, um, uh, also to be to board a lot of the win- sadly, a lot of the windows has been shattered, uh, by burglars, unfortunately. And also on the first of January, which is yesterday, we had a, a meeting by Environment and Transportation Committee. Uh, that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carroll.
Yes, on the twenty-second, I attended with, um, Council, Councilmembers Bell and Hood and also Mayor Burks, an event at the Star and Senior Center, which we gave out free COVID-nineteen tests, as well as masks and hand sanitizer to the residents who are particularly at risk as they were required to be over sixty-two to live in the Star and Senior Center. And I'm excited that, uh, the council voted to approve, uh, purchasing more tests. I look forward to the more COVID-nineteen test distributions being made around Clarkston City.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, on January the twentieth, I had the pleasure of meeting Janet Sevilla from the World Congress Center Authority. She donated, um, six hundred tote bags for the city for upcoming events. Um, she is actually the manager of sustainability, um, for the Congress Center. And, um, as Councilwoman Carroll stated, on the twenty-first of January, I had the pleasure of also being at the Stern Senior Center with, um, Councilwoman Bell, the City Manager and Mayor, and, um, Economic Development Coordinator, the NADA. We, um, I do apologize. I do apologize. We had the pleasure of meeting a lot of the residents. They were very excited that we chose them to get the first batch of test. Um, and they are looking forward to meeting some more council members on the twelfth of February for the food distribution. Um, we're having the mobile food distribution, but we always cater to our seniors. So on February the twelfth, we will be at the Tahoe Village Shopping Center doing another food distribution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins. You're on mute. Thank you.
Get it together, I've been doing this for two years now and still don't remember to turn on the microphone. Um, I would just like to, um, add on to what Councilmember Yasu said about our touring the house in Forty Oaks. And I just would like to reassure everybody that we have not made any big decisions on that. Apparently, we spent a good bit of time coming up to a similar decision that the Historical Committee came to about a year and a half ago in that we need a home preservation specialist to inspect the house and give us an assessment of the historical value and architectural value of the house. Um, and then we will be reaching out to the community as well. Um, so I, looks like this is going to be a joint effort between the Environmental Committee and the Historical Committee and the community at large, um, before any large outlay of money happens, one way or the other. Um, so that's where we are about that. Keep your masks on, keep your hands washed, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you. Uh, on January, well, um, I had a conversation, set up a meeting with Roberta about MLK Day. I know that the city historically hasn't had a specific event, um, but I want to change that. And so I talked to her, um, in regards to the Education Task Force and Roberta provided some recommendations on, um, the city hosting an annual MLK Day event in the future. Um, due to the timing this year, we weren't able to put something together so quickly. Um, but Roberta talked to childcare, um, centers and their staff about they're already hosted, uh, events and celebrations that they were having. And so, um, they should have, or they're going to, um, send the, the city staff, uh, photos so that we can kind of amplify and highlight those on our, um, newsletter. Also, on, uh, January fourteenth, after reading, um, the Study Committee's, uh, recommendations from Global Talent at the State Capitol, um, I talked to Darlene Lynch, who is the head of External Affairs, uh, representing a big, uh, partnership with all the coalitions at the Capitol. Um, and she provided overview of the recommendations for the final report. And we had a lot of residents and business owners that testified on the need to remove unintended barriers to public college, technical colleges, and, um, to assist them to earn degrees, uh, as well as the need to invest in English learning, uh, and support childcare entrepreneurship, um, by providing programs to enable more high-quality, um, childcare, uh, in, uh, our unborn community, uh, as well as incentives, uh, for internship, I'm not, I'm sorry, uh, entrepreneurship programs, not internships, uh, to support business startups in different languages and support them with branding, uh, to increase revenue. Uh, and I can't wait, uh, to take this to committee, uh, since we, um, just agree who's going to chair some of those committees, uh, so we can flesh out the ideas and get more community input. Uh, in addition to that, on January fourteenth, I set up a meeting with the program. It's a pilot program called Guarantee Income, um, with the Deputy Director and the City Manager around other cities across the country and how they've been able to execute it. Um, the program itself provides direct cash assistance to provide relief to residents impacted by COVID-nineteen pandemic, um, that meet certain resident income requirements and can indicate hardship. So I thought it'd be a great idea to provide relief and help, um, support with things like mental health services, childcare, different clothing, some of those are things that have been used in the past, uh, and additional funds for like therapeutic intervention, um, because a lot of people lost their insurance and still are grieving the deaths of lost ones and loved ones. Um, in addition to that, as my, uh, council member, um, colleagues have already mentioned, I attended the COVID-nineteen testing kit distribution, and that took place. I was there on Friday and Saturday, um, with most of the council. Um, and it was great to see our senior, that are senior residents and hear how grateful they were to receive, um, testing kits from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And now it's the mayor's report. And so I participated with the resettlement, uh, Refugee Quarterly Meeting on January twenty-seventh. I also participated with, uh, District Seven, uh, with Dr. Joyce Motley, um, for Board of Education meeting with her. I participated with, uh, Commissioner Terry and Roots Down in terms of a fruitful community, um, webinar that they hosted on, uh, I think it was the twenty-sixth. And so those are the activities and I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege and, um, say, uh, thank you all for your support, um, during this time. Um, and some of you may or may not know. Could you? Thank you. Um, my mother passed away, Grace Harris, and she was very active with the senior group. She was on the senior council, um, she was on the senior committee. She worked with the community center. And so, um, thank you all for your support and, um, making sure that I remember her legacy of working with the city. And so she loved being called Councilwoman Burks' mother, Council, uh, Mayor Burks' mother, but more importantly, she was my mother. And so during this time, um, just want to say thank you to everyone. So that concludes my report. And we will now move on to public comments. And at this time, let me bring this up so I can see, even though I have glasses on. Um, all right. Let me close this out, sorry about that. And we will proceed with public comments. So any member of the public may address the council during the time allowed it for public comments. Each, each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding office officer. The public comment period will be limited to forty minutes and it is a, not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The City Council desires, the City Council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly and timely manner. Ms. Cowie, did we have anyone signed up for public comments at this time?
Madam Mayor, we did not have anyone signed up for public comment.
Okay. And I will just, for the interest of anyone who wants to speak.
However, if you would like to raise your hand, I will acknowledge you.
So would anyone like to do public comments at this time? I do not see any public comments. And I'll say it one more time, anyone who would like to do public comments at this time, please, do raise hand. Okay, no public comments. So we'll close public comments at this time. We have no old business. And we now have consent agenda. And just so that we're very clear as far as what consent, yes, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hood, who you, you would like to make any, uh, council, council remarks at this time? You're on mute. You're on mute. Um, mute yourself. Hit the button, there you go.
Um, only that I have just been through, uh, computer la-la land since, uh, two minutes before the meeting, but no, uh, no report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that being said, we will now move to consent agenda. Consent agenda is when the council members have agreed on items that they all agree to vote, um, in favor of or they have no, um, no further discussion or deliberation. And so this gives us an opportunity for us to move swiftly and proceed with the business of the city. But we have concurrence with all the council members on these items that are currently placed in the consent agenda. And you'll see that there, item, um, A, which is the discussion to appoint a new city clerk, item B, which is discussion to appoint a new planning and zoning board member, item C, which is the discussion to reappoint Dean Moore to the Clarkston Historical Preservation Committee, item D, which is discussion of alcohol license for Olympic Cafe DBA Assenia Cafe and Restaurant at nine-two-six Montreal Road, Suite Three E, Clarkston, Georgia, three-zero-zero-two-one. Item E, which is the discussion of an alcohol license for Assenia Investments Incorporated, DBA Chevron Food Mart at three-six-three-five Church Street, Clarkston, Georgia, three-zero-zero-two-one. Item F, which is the discussion of change order for the Splot zero-four B and C pedestrian enhancement, Trailhead and Roland Street mailbox replacement project. Item G, which is the discussion to appoint council members to the Standing Advisory Committee, and those are the Public Safety and Legal Committee, Transportation and Environment Committee, Housing and Infrastructure Committee, Committee, Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee, Business and Economic Development Committee, and Equity, Inclusion, and Opportunity Committee. Item H, which is the discussion to appoint members to the Early Learning Task Force, Youth Advisory Council, Senior Resident Advisory Council, Pub Police Community Task Force, Preventative Health Task Force, Public Arts Advisory Committee, and the Charter Review Committee. You've heard all of these items, which the, the, at this time, I will entertain a motion to move forward with the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second that we move. And, and Mr. Quinn, do we need to say from items A through, um, A through H, are we okay? I just want to make sure.
Um, well, I think you read them and it's pretty clear. In the past, we've had a motion to adopt the consent agenda and then a motion to approve all those items at once separately in case, for instance, one of the members might want to discuss one of the items, even though they would ultimately be in favor of it. So that would be my advice for the consent agenda, motion to adopt and motion to approve.
So can I have that first motion to adopt?
That we adopt the consent agenda.
Now, take a second. Okay. Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we adopt the consent agenda. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion pass. Now we'll proceed with the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
A second. Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you all. So with that being said, we will now move on to the items, which are new business. Um, and it's the discussion of the alcohol license for the Longa Bros, the, the Longa Bros LLC, uh, DBA Chevron Food Mart at one-one-oh-nine Montreal Road, Clarkston, Georgia, three-zero-zero-two-one. Ms. Cowie.
Yes. Mayor Burks, the new owner of the Chevron Food Mart located at eleven-oh-nine Montreal Road has made application for an alcohol beverage license for beer, wine, malt beverages sales. All required inspections have been performed and the required background check has passed. The city co-compliance officer has reviewed the application and the grandfathered measured distance of the location is found to again meet the current, at the time of application, distance requirement as defined by code. The Alcohol Review Committee has performed a thorough review of the various components of this application. And under Clarkston Code three-dash-five-three, the city council is vested with the final authority to grant an alcohol license. And staff did recommend approval. Mayor Burks.
Thank you, City Manager, Ms. Cowie. So at this time, uh, council, I'll entertain a motion on this item so that we can proceed and then we can have any further discussion if necessary.
I have the motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Johnson.
I move to approve an alcohol application submitted by Thong Bros LLC DBA Chevron Food Mart.
I said.
It's been properly moved in second that we approve an alcohol license for Tho- the Long Bros LLC DBA Chevron Food at eleven-oh-nine Montreal Roads, Clarkston, Georgia, three-zero-zero-two-one. So now, is there any discussion on this item? If there is no discussion on this item, are you ready?
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins, I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to ask Ms. Farcus, who I see out there, to pronounce the name properly.
Please, please.
Killing it.
Thank you.
Okay, you're asking the wrong person.
Oh, that's not you? I thought that was your applicant.
I represent the, um, applicant, but it's not me. But I pronounce it Thong Lung Bros. Um, they are from, um, uh, I forgot the country they're from, so I can't pronounce it. But my client's here and I'm sure he'll be happy to pronounce it for you.
That's all I'd like is proper pronunciation.
Thank you.
Uh, hi, hi, everybody, uh, this is Bisan. I could, I could give you the exact, uh, pronunciation of that. Actually, that's, uh, Thon Bros LLC. Yeah, that's the, that's the correct pronunciation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, with that being said, and there's no other discussion or clarification, um, are you ready for the question? All, yes, uh, Councilwoman Bell, did you have something?
No idea.
Okay, okay, I, I can tell, sorry. Uh, if no further discussion, um, you ready for the question? All in favor of the approval of the alcohol license for Thon Lung Bros LLC DBA Chevron at eleven-oh-nine Montreal Road, Clarkston, Georgia, three-zero-zero-two-one, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? All right, with that being said, the motion's passed. Thank you all. We'll proceed on with item B, which is, thank you, thank you. Um, with item B, which is the discussion to allocate thirty thousand in ARPA funds to the Healthy Community Clarkston Outreach Initiative, submitted by the Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation Incorporated. And it's my understanding that this item will be put on the March work session agenda, not?
February twenty-second. Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. So at this time, can I move to have this? Um, defer to our February work session.
I move that we defer the approval of the allocation of thirty thousand, uh, in our funds to the Healthy Community Clarkston Outreach Initiative to the February twenty-third, correct me if I'm wrong, on work session.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Twenty-second. Okay. And it's been, and can I get a second?
I second.
Okay. Okay, thank you, it's been properly moved in second that we defer, uh, the allocation of the thirty thousand dollars in ARPA funds, uh, to the February twenty-second meeting. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion pass, thank you all. The next item is C, discussion to allocate ARPA funds to offer Clarkston homeowners assistance with home repairs and/or weatherization not to exceed five thousand for each household. And Councilwoman Johnson, if you would like to proceed with this item.
Um, this item has been recommended to go to, to, um, committee.
Um, this item has been recommended to go to, to, um, committee. So I'm going to defer this item to the housing, what, I don't remember, was it housing and infrastructure? Yeah, housing and infrastructure. Committee. We can't hear it.
Make the motion to refer it to the committee. Yes.
Would, would, wouldn't weatherization also be, uh, purview of environment committee? I would love to jointly do it with them. If that's not a problem.
Yeah, we can, we can have a joint committee meeting.
All right. Well, I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
I'm move to approve, um, I'm so sorry, I was getting ready to approve it. I move to defer.
Not, not defer, but you're going to refer it to the.
Refer it, refer this item to the Housing and Environmental Committee for review.
The item to the Housing and Environmental Committees. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Motion pass. We'll now proceed to D, which is discussion of Splot zero nine Professional Engineering Services for Mel Avenue Crossing Multi-Leg Intersection Safety and Operational Improvement. City Manager Ms. Cowie.
Mayor Burke, the City of Clarkston requested proposals from qualified engineering design firms to provide engineering design, environmental, utility permitting, right-of-way plans, surveying, construction plans and specifications, bid documents and manuals, and related traffic safety and operational improvements at the Mel Avenue CXX CSX Crossing adjoining Church and East Pond de Leon Multi-Leg Intersection. During our discussion at our previous work session, we did review these RFPs with council and our recommendation, which is ours, the city managers and the interim city managers and the engineer, we did review the RFPs and made the recommendation to council of Pond and Company. Mayor Burke.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation from staff for Pond Company. At this time, I will entertain a motion for this item and then we'll proceed with any additional discussion. Anybody? Everybody?
I have a motion, Madam Mayor. I move, I motioned, I move to approve the request for a proposal, the RFP submitted for the Splot oh nine Professional Engineering Service for Mel Avenue Crossing Multi-Leg Intersection Safety and Operational Operational Improvement.
Okay, so we want to prove it, but the, the. We need to say ponds. We need to make sure that we identify ponds as the select. So if you can make sure that we approve it and we have ponds and. Selected contractor.
I move to approve ponds as the selected Professional Engineering Service for the Mel Avenue Crossing Multi-Leg Intersection Safety and Operational Improvements.
Properly moved in second that we approve pond as the selected Professional Engineering Service for the Mel Avenue Crossing Multi-Leg in Intersection Safety and Operational Improvements. Is there any discussion on this item at this time? Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I just wanna, uh, I just got, I'm not sure, but procedure of question, um, shouldn't we include, uh, the cost as well with the motion?
Go back and see what are called.
Uh, no, Shawana, um, next, the next step, councilman, uh, is for Shawana and I uh, to negotiate the scope and fee with the selected firm. That's the two-step process that we discussed before, which is called the Brooks Act. Uh, and so we will bring back to you, uh, at next work session and next council meeting, uh, the recommended fee uh, for, uh, Pond to perform the work.
So I have a question on that because normally, uh, whenever there is a bid, we usually, uh, try to see the cost as a, as part of the, you know, as part of the evaluation process um, terms of cost and costs. So basically, we're going to approve whatever Pond is gonna charge us at that point, I guess.
It's, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, it's a two-step process. So first, because of the federal regulation, because they're contributing to the project, they want you to choose a vendor just based on assessment of criteria for their merit. And then as a second separate step, uh, agree to a contract price with them. So if we take this first step and then it's not possible to agree on an acceptable price as far as the council's concerned, then we would go back to step one and, and, uh, take it from there. But they want you to, uh, have first approving the vendor, then negotiate the price, then approve the price. Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Attorney Quinn. Yes, Councilwoman Bell.
So Quinn, correct me if I'm wrong, but I have a question, Attorney Quinn. Should we not have approved the receipt of the RFPs first and then approve that we were awarding Pond and Company as the prime company, um, for the city review? Or we can do it all at once? I just want to make sure we did it right.
I don't think there's a necessity for the council to approve anything prior to uh, selecting the most qualified bidder. I mean, it's basically out of step. Sometimes the staff will ask the council to approve something, putting it out for bid because they basically want to know that the council's at least interested before they invest the city resources in even putting it out to bid. I think in this instance, because it was part of a larger project and it's known that the council wants to do this in the general sense, that the staff just went ahead and did it and brought back the bids. But the first thing y'all would need to vote on is what's being presented tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Quinn.
You're welcome.
Question, Councilwoman Bell. Councilwoman Hood.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Quinn, would it be appropriate, uh, to add in this motion that this is step one, uh, or something like that? And that the next step would be saying, uh, a price so that when the members of the public read this, they understand that the contract hasn't actually been awarded.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. It may be a phrase. Sorry, um, I'm not, I hope I'm not speaking over you. I don't know if we had an audio difficulty. I just wanted to recommend a specific motion, which would be, you know, to approve identifying Pond and Company as the most qualified bidder and authorize the further negotiations.
Would it help to, with that being said, would it help for Councilwoman Johnson to rescind her motion and then come back and use?
Uh, two things, Madam Mayor. First, I'm afraid that I don't remember the exact language of the motion after our discussion I've had since then. But also, uh, I would like to see what Mr. Kaiser has to say because he's much more experienced with this particular, uh, law than I am.
Okay, Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the recommendation needs to be uh, that city council approves of the highest ranked technical firm in accordance with Brooks Act and that firm being Pond and Company as the first step in the selection process with the select, with the next step being fee and scope negotiations at the next council meeting.
Okay, so we need to make sure that we select the highest highest bid. Technical firm, sorry, highest ranked technical firm. And then the next step is to develop the scope, the fee and scope.
To negotiate the fee and scope. And the reason this is critical is, as we did with the Streetskate Project seven years ago uh, in other future federal projects, Ms. Mayor, uh, that we've got to get the wording right in the event, as we discussed last time, uh, for the potential of an audit, which in all likelihood will happen again as we did on three different occasions on the Streetskate Project.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilwoman Johnson, would you like to rescind your, your motion at this time?
No, I rescind my motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. And so with that being said, I am open to someone providing me a motion based on what Mr. Kaiser advised us.
So I'm gonna try. Kaiser, correct me if I speak out of term, because I want to make sure this is correct for the other purposes. But I move to approve, um, Pond and Company, uh, as the awarded firm, as the highest-ranked technical firm and to negotiate the fee schedule of this technical firm in the future.
Be in scope.
Be in scope. I can get it right. Please.
Yes, you are recommending Pond and Company as the highest-ranked technical firm in accordance with the Brooks Act as step one in the selection process, with step two occurring at the next council meeting for the acceptance of the, of the negotiated scope and fee.
Work session.
Work session, work session.
Right, right, right.
Okay, Councilwoman Bell, you want to make sure you got all that in there?
Okay, Mr. Kaiser, give me one more time and I'm gonna have it right. Uh, has been awarded as the highest technical.
Highest-ranked technical, upon the company has been selected, has been, has been selected. City council has recommended Pond and Company as the highest-ranked technical firm in accordance with the Brooks Act. And at the next work session, city council will review the negotiated fee and scope with the highest-ranked firm, which is Pond.
We're gonna get it right this time. Let's see what we got. Okay. So I move that the Clarkson City Council recommend the Pond and Company has been selected as the highest-ranked technical firm in accordance to the Brooks Act. At the next work session, the city council will review the negotiated fee and scope schedule of this technical firm as the next step for the upcoming work session, something like that.
I was to say it was the first step.
I second that.
Selecting them is the first. Just you gotta put that in there. So the first step is.
What's that first? Okay, let me do this again, because I put stuff in here. Okay, the city council is recommending the Pond and Company has been selected as the highest-ranked technical firm in accordance to the Brooks Act. As in the next work session, the city council will review the, the negotiated fee and scope schedule of this technical firm as the first step for the next work session.
That's the second step. This is the first step, the selection.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, there's somebody.
Okay, I would like, I'll do it. Okay. I'm, I'm moved that council recommends Pond and Corp, Pond and Company, incorporation as, as the highest-ranked technical firm according to the Brooks Act, which is our first step. With the second step being the negotiation of the fee and scope schedule, which is going to take place at the next count work, council work session.
I second that.
All right, it's been properly moved in second. Don't make me say this motion again. So yes, what she said. Um, is there any further discussion on this item? None. Okay, all in favor of the motion to select Pond and Company as the highest-ranked technical firm in accordance with the Brooks Act as a first step? And then the second step is the city council will review and negotiate fee and scope with the highest-ranked firm, which is Pond. Right? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Well, thank you for a mouthful, Mr. Kaiser. We appreciate that. So hopefully, we've made sure that we covered everything for the audit purposes and for the minute purposes. So with that being said, uh, I will move to have someone to adjourn the meeting. Vice Mayor Yasu.
Have a motion to adjourn, Madam Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Take care, bye-bye.